Start with roll call. Trustee Woods. Eric, trustee Thompson.
Here.
Trustee Greaves.
Here.
Trustee Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Owens, here, and Booker present. I'll find this out.
Thanks, Ed.
I'd like to ask everybody to stand and.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any persons designed to be heard tonight?
Yeah.
Uh, there is, Ike Edwards, thirty-nine oh nine West River Lane.
Could you please come up to the mic?
Okay.
That could caution you that it's a three hundred and eleven.
Okay, I'm trying not to take too much time at the colors. All one of them. Thank Tyler for arranging the meeting on that one thing, say. With myself and several other residents that live in the area that I think is referred to officially as Kildare Acres. In regard to that meeting, we had some concerns about a wooded area. That does not have a name, but it sort of separates Kildare Acres from Brown Deer Road. We have some concern that they were going to develop that land. And we wanted a meeting to discuss it. And no more than the meeting was in favor that I had been developed in any way. Since that time, I had an opportunity to think about it. And based on the paperwork that we do have. That land is a park. But unlike most parks. It doesn't have a name. And I propose it should have one. And I'm not here to tie that. What would be the procedure? In order to make that.
Well, I advise you to talk as a staff. It's not new to us. I advise you to talk to staff, but we can't take that up here tonight.
Is there someone who can take action, Steve?
Yeah, so just the clarification of the board. Ike and I did talk, so I mentioned, I invited him to come just so he could express his comments. If this is a item for a future agenda item. I'd be happy for staff to make a recommendation on a process that you could take a look at at a future board meeting. And then Ike, I would inform you of what that process would be. So just need a, you know, just wanted to put that on your radar and have Ike speak to it. So when you saw it on the agenda, yeah, at a future agenda, you knew where it was coming from.
Do you have my contact?
I do, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Is that right? I think we can move on to elected officials and staff reports. Are there any questions, issues? I have a concern for that. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. And that includes consideration of minutes April first, two thousand forty-four. Except March two twenty twenty-four voucher statement. Consider approval of what has been taxation liquor and permitted malt beverage license for Brown Deer Lane. Change of ownership located at forty-seven fifteen West Rabbit. Consider approval of special events application for two thousand twenty-four. Movies in the park, community vibes, and Fourth of July celebration. Consider approval of the intergovernmental agreement for the two thousand twenty-four national convention. And review and approved certified survey mask for Wooddale Cross at forty-one fourteen Wooddale Avenue. Any items that any of the trustees?
Trustee Booker?
Yes.
Before we make a motion for approval on the consent agenda. I would just ask for item E. That if the board approves this item, just to make a small modification to the. Motion, which including the language. Subject to village attorney review with staff. Because there's one amendment that may happen on the workers' compensation piece. Chief Nimmer informed me that there are some members out in. The Waukesha County area, they had some issue with the workers' common language. So in case there's any revisions that are made, any that are friendly or helpful beneficial to the municipality. We'll just want that included in the motion for that item, so we have some flexibility of amending that section.
So are you suggesting that we make the change part of the consent agenda?
Yeah, what I would just recommend is to approve. A through B, and then just do a separate motion for E with that included language.
Anybody else have any questions?
I think another back.
Trustee Johnson?
Yeah, I think on the consent agenda, just across the owner. The front owner is sitting here.
Yep. You know the owner of Bull and Arrow is here.
Yes.
It would be possible to come up and speak. You would love it, certainly. Could you grab the mic, otherwise you can't hear any stuff.
My name is James, I'm going by his. Thirty-one of four businesses and drive. Five three two zero nine. I have visions over the twenty years ago. I do have carpeting process stores and next door, and I have to do that club. See to my partner.
I guess part of my question is. Why this type of business if we have background with dealing with ranchers and grocery?
Grocery store.
So why this business?
I don't know, our convenience store, convenience, I'd like more entertainment business more than.
We wanted to actually reach out to people elsewhere because we have been doing groceries from many years now. And when we met him and when we saw the solid bowl holding, we had not thought that particular bowling alley. At that time, but when we met, came and then saw the bowling alley, we fell in love with it. And the fact we actually go. Like to do that.
When does the transaction actually take place? When do we actually own a property?
No, we haven't yet voted because we are waiting for the license approval. Once we get your approval, then we will go ahead and do all the closing for us.
Any other things would be happening besides the loan?
No, so it would be just as it is, whatever it is running, the way it is running. In fact, it would be on board for a while. And since we are new to this business, she will be handling us for a while.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Johnson?
Uh, would then we change the length LLC or would we pay Brown Deer Land? It would remain Brown Deer Lanes, however, the business name is changed. So we would be operating through JP Lanes because it's now it's being operated in a different name. So we would just thought it would be JP Light LLC doing this as Brown Deer.
Yes, that's right.
What else? Well, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So who can elect to entertain a motion? To approve consent agenda without.
I'm hoping we approve the consent agenda, um, for the exception of I M G.
There's second. It was a motion by trustee Thompson, like with my trustee Owens. All of them, favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we pick on item D, separate item.
I'm hoping we approve the intergovernmental agreement for the twenty twenty-four Republican National Convention. Subject to the review, subject to the village attorney review with staff.
There's second. Trustee. It was motion by trustee Thompson, second by trustee Woods. Is all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we're into new business. Consider approval of preferred alternatives for the fifty-first street project from West Brown Deer Road. This is our call. That's one hundred. West Woodland Drive.
All right, thank you. I think I saw most of everyone was at the public information meeting a couple of weeks ago. We held it before the village board meeting. There were several alternatives that were presented as part of our fifty-first street project. This is a two thousand twenty-five instruction here. And this is also coinciding with the DOT funded bridge replacement portion of that project. So we had a consultant kind of review several different options for reconstructing and repaving North Fifty-first Street from Brown Deer Road. North to Littlebit. When you return on North Fifty-first Street, as you go north and you pass the bridge. You exit a big light industrial area and then you move into a more residential area. We are proposing to give North Fifty-first Street a road diet at this location. Very similar, almost exactly what we did to Fairy Chasm. And that will be from Fifty-first Street to Sixtieth Street that was done in two thousand fourteen. And for a couple of different reasons. One, there is a large volume of pedestrian walkers and bikers on Fifty-first Street from the Strangely Neighborhood. And then also from the businesses to the south. You can go up and down Fifty-first Street anytime if they see walkers on the street. So our thought is to now have a pathway for them to be walking the shared use path off the road way, lot safer. And then also with narrowing the street, it has a traffic calming effect. Get some high speeds going down Fifty-first Street in this residential area because it's so wide. Feels that you can go faster and so with narrowing it into a more traditional neighborhood street will have a. Benefit for traffic calm. So there were four alternatives that were presented for reconstruction south of the bridge and five north of the bridge. I'll briefly go through these and many of you have seen these exhibits. I will say there was overwhelming support from the people in attendance, residents that lived in the neighborhood. For the road diet and adding a shared use path on Fifty-first Street. South of the bridge from Brown Deer Road to the bridge. That width will stay the same because we have a high volume of trucks with people going to Tapco and Crystal Company and the other businesses there. So those curb lines will remain as is. There is existing sidewalk on the east side of the road that will be replaced, it's under the board condition. And then so the alternatives looked at keeping it as is, with just replacing sidewalk currently at dead ends here at Greenwood Drive. So one of the alternatives looked at, I don't know, replacing that existing sidewalk, but adding sidewalk to the north just past the dance studio. To link up with the Oakleaf Trail. The third alternative was adding a portion of sidewalk. I think we've heard most of you around the board when Andy from Tapco had. Petition for some sidewalk along the Tapco side, there's a bus stop ongoing near road and they have a lot of police that. That use the bus to come in, so having a safe path for them into the business. But we took it, so we had looked at adding some sidewalk just in that little piece. And then we took it a step further, an alternative four of adding sidewalk. Again, on the east side with our new linkage to the north past the dance studio. And then on the west side, adding sidewalk all the way up, also to the Oakleaf Trail. And that kind of solved our tracks a couple of boxes where you're not just. Servicing Tapco with the pedestrian facility, you're servicing the other businesses to the north as well. So the staff recommendation and what we heard from the public information meeting was that alternative four on the south side of Brown Deer Road. And then as we go north, we had a couple of options of adding a shared use path on the east side. There's some problems with adding it on the east side, there's existing curbing gutter all along that side right now. And so we added a sidewalk there, we would have to move that curbing gutter inwards. The sidewalk would then go in the existing curbing gutter location, but we'd have to do a lot of underground utility work. Because there's inlets that are all in that curbing gutter. So we'd have to move all of those inlets out. So we also looked at an alternative five where we were adding a shared use path. Not on the east side, but on the west side. It's a lot easier to do, there's a ditch on the west side. And so the the new shared use path would be where the old road, vacated old road, and then you'd add an eight-foot path. A terrace with some trees and then the new Fifty-first Street. So Fifty-first Street would look, the best way to describe it is exactly how Fairy Chasm looks past the park. You have that path that's on the north side of Fairy Chasm, then there's a grass terrace and the ditch is on the backside of the path. So there is not any work that is happening any closer to anyone's yards whatsoever. All of the work will stay within the current road width and hold. And then the ditches on the backside would just be very lightly graded to match our shared use path. So again, I heard from a lot of residents, we also talked about this at Public Works Committee last week Wednesday. We did have unanimous recommendation to forward with alternative four on the south part of Brown Deer Road and alternative five. Northern Brown Deer. And the reason for some of what quicker decision on this project is whatever we designed for Fifty-first Street, that these pad combinations. Impacts how we build and design the bridge. Because the bridge will have to accommodate these paths. I don't want to have a lot of information, I do have these exhibits, we had them saw at the at the meeting. But if anyone has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Let's see, yeah. Yeah, we've got a little, uh, related to the bridge. Are we looking at a wider bridge? How did that play out with the shrinking of the street line north of there and even existing with?
So mainly the bridge, so right now it's a box culvert, it's a double cell box culvert, either there is technically a bridge. This would now be a traditional bridge structure that would go back in. So you're not going to have, if you peep over the railing, so you'll see these two cells that go one way. But from now, it'll just be an open span bridge. The the width, I think, does get bumped, you know, to the east and west, but that's to accommodate these pad facilities. It's not much, it also shifts slightly to the slightly to accommodate some of this free flow a little bit better so stuff doesn't get pumped. But no, from the travel public, you won't notice much difference, but so it's kind of all the stuff that's happening underneath.
Yeah, I definitely agree, I mean, this is a street after rail walk, and you have a safe base walk.
Yeah, that would be great. I think that similar comment that I've heard from almost everybody here, because we live right up there too, so if you bike down. This helps a lot. Some residents that work the east side of the street, maybe also some of the west side. Yeah. Have to use you can see some of those.
Thanks, Brady. So let's kind of start point at the bottom, do you have any baseline or like urban or layout or?
So right now, we can't do some work in the stream or some DNR regulations. So this will probably follow your traditional memorial day to day for day construction. The bridge, we will have many more meetings because the bridge will be out this whole time. So anyone that's in the neighborhood, unfortunately, going to be affected that summer, we're going to have to come out. Your routes are going to be blocked up and Fairy Chasm, you're going to have to get to Sixtieth Street if you're north of the bridge. So we'll do a little bit of an inconvenience with that change that bridges take out of those box culverts out there.
Now, when the street is, Fifty-first Street is done, you know how long that going to take for it?
Yeah, the street part of this is actually not very complicated whatsoever. This will be, the kind of the heavy lifting is just once they pulverize that pavement. And that will, you'll be amazed how fast that will look like, two days. Then they'll have another couple of days of grading everything out. After they're done grading, in our respects, they have ten days to cover that with asphalt. So this will probably be about a two to three week paving job and you'll be able to dry on it. Also, you will be able to dry on it, let's say, pulverize. The only inconvenience is like the day of polarization, there'll be some. You know, some navigation to get around and then the machines here will work, but. Ultimately, it's not a terribly complex project from a paving standpoint.
Is there water going underneath that bridge?
Yeah.
So how do you go defer to water?
So yeah, New York Creek does go under, they'll probably construct some sort of like popper dam and here there, build it like you inhale, but they can bypass something. Around it, there'll be a big pipe that will kind of come around their structure here.
Any other questions? If not, we entertain a motion.
Yeah, emotional. So I I knew that we, the preferential enters for the Fifty-first Street. North Fifty-first Street project from West Brown Deer Road to Woodland Drive.
There's second.
I said.
It was moved by trustee Greaves to fully, second by trustee Owens. All of the favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, then WPDES, N R two sixteen and M M S D, chapter thirteen, annual report for the activities for the year twenty twenty-three.
All right, I'm going to keep this pretty. Keep this pretty high level. We did present this also at Public Works Committee. Heard this, been on the board, I've been saying this for ten years on these reports. So every year we have to submit our stormwater activities to the DNR, the village. We are a permitted MS four, that's municipal separate storm sewer system. And so we just need to publicly present our activities from two thousand twenty-three. So you'll see, if you want to go through and see all the stuff, the reports are in the packet, so have fun if you want to fall asleep tonight. There's a, there's a bunch of components with our permit that we report on. So the first stuff in there is education, public education and outreach. We had a sweet water reports on most of this, the village contributes to sweet water. There are a group that also works through M M S D. You may see some commercials, stormwater related, they have this puppet dog, his name is Sprinkles. So now that I say, you'll probably see it, they usually run it on channel twelve and channel four. Usually around like the news, news times. And so that's how we satisfy our education and outreach requirement of the permit. We do also do some brown deer specific events. We've been working with groups from Miller Crewers to do river cleanups. We have another one of these scheduled for this year. This will take place by Walmart and then south of Walmart through some backyards. So we try to do those annually and then you'll usually see sweet water, we'll have a tent at one of our events, whether it's community vibes. National night out, they've been at Fourth of July, they did some stuff last summer. I think during the dog swims at at the pond. Usually have an informational tent. They also run a program called a storm drain where people can go on and. Sign up to make sure that the storm drain in front of their house is clear of any leaves and debris. And then their other kind of focus is on. Proper salt usage in the wintertime to avoid. Chloride load in the adjacent receiving waters. The other big aspect is that operationally, so we have our stormwater technician, we basically it's the street sweeper. We're permitted to run the street sweeper certain times of the year and then a certain frequency. So right now, the street sweeper is out every day and trying to hit all of the curbing gutter streets. And then he will actually move into the other neighborhoods and we try to street sweep every single street in the village at least once. The curbing gutter roads get hit almost every two weeks. He is also working on catch basin cleaning. So he'll go around and we try to hit ten percent of our system every year. But last year, I think he got close to forty percent of our system. So we're kind of far ahead of our goal on cleaning catch basins. And we also will, as during the cleaning process, inspect every catch basin and then document ones that are needed for repair. And then during our summer construction, typically we try to coordinate it with our street paving projects. Those catch basins will be repaired and we do all that work in-house. So the guys do a great job of keeping track of everything, making sure everything's clear and open. And then we also have our annual ditch rehab program. Last year was on Kildare Court and North Sixty-third Street. And we kind of coordinate that again with our water main relay project. This year will be over on North Sixty-first Street, just west of, in that neighborhood, west of the school. So those are, those are kind of the big activities. We also will occasionally, we have a stream bank stabilization project that should be coming up. We're kind of working through some easement stuff on Beaver Creek by Walmart. The latest one that we did was over here by Pitney Bowes from Village Park to Green Bay Road. But that's kind of the main things that we focus on, stormwater related. So if anyone has any stormwater specific questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Trustee Greaves? Anybody want to motion? Any, any favor motions?
We don't, we don't even need a motion, just for information only. This satisfies our requirement of a public presentation.
So then we can move on to I would see consider ordinance twenty-four, actual one, ordinance facility sixty-four. Then default of two thousand forty-three, sponsor like seventy-three opt out of existing closing hours for licensed alcohol purposes during the Republican National Convention.
I'll take this one, trustee Booker. So this is a, this one would almost be a consent agenda item, but be within ordinance, we will need to do a roll call vote on this one. So based on some state legislation. Several counties around the Milwaukee metropolitan area. Municipalities in those counties have the ability to extend bar hours till four AM for the RNC. Unless you pass an ordinance to opt out of that. So this ordinance that is being recommended would opt out of that. If approved today through the business license process that we do in June, we will notify. The the businesses of the opt-outs in Brown Deer. So that will be a way that we make sure to communicate this to them. There aren't in the North Shore, Shorewood, just past theirs. A lot of our other corner parts in North Shore don't have. Bars like River Hills and and Bayside and that, so I don't anticipate a lot of them taking action. But you know, it's just a question if if we would want our of our establishments to be open till four AM during the RNC. So if you want us to opt out, so they remain the same hours, you would approve the ordinance. If you don't want to opt out and have the extended hours, then we would take no action or defer the ordinance.
I just have one little caveat, if we are going to.
I just have one little caveat. If we are going to opt out, it's a legal technicality, but we do need to change. Change the end of the motion to say as of May one, twenty twenty four. Essentially, the law is staggered to give villages time to decide if they want to opt in or opt out. So adopting the ordinance today is opting out of a law that doesn't yet exist. So we need to just add that to the end of the motion if you're going to approve it.
Has any of the establishments in the village, was it concerned of wanting to stay open until four?
I mean, no one has notified us wanting to stay open, but there is, uh, there is no, been no outreach to them.
Do we have any idea what the additional traffic is going to be or the hotel renovations? Do we know people are going to be staying here during?
Yeah, I've talked with each of the hotels and uh. Um, three of the four were part of this like um, contractor agreement to locate. Um, um, and then one is, is doing it on their own, but all of them are going to be booked. Um, for, for the R N C. Um, so. Um, yeah, I mean, we'll have additional traffic, um, but to the impact that it would have a concern or anything like that, I wouldn't foresee that. Um, I mean, sometimes when we have large uh, events on the weekends, like at the aquatic center of that, I mean. Um, you know, we would see a tick in traffic for those, but. Um, you know, I, it's nothing that I would anticipate that we would have to do anything um, out of the norm. So the one caveat will be with some of the security in that, there'll be some discussions with the police department. Just so they're aware as far as the uh. You know, who may be staying in some of the hotels. But other than that, I don't think there would be anything that would be out of the norm.
So we do know that some of the hotel establishments in the village are both during this conference. With this four A M appointment as well. So if they like, um, here they have a bar uh, there.
Yeah, it's, it's for, it's for anyone that has. Um, it's for anyone that has the, just bring it up here. The class B beer, the class B liquor or the class B wine only license.
I guess my only concern would be if I'm at the convention, it's downtown walking. And people are traveling back and forth and the conversations are. Their establishments are being open to four A M. They're going to stay downtown and they're going to travel back later because there's no. Adult beverage entertained in a hotel. I go to a lot of conferences and I announced the first thing that came to mind, you said three of the four hotels were booked. For the conference, but if you're at the conference, if your bar is closed, you're going to go, you're going to stay somewhere longer. Where the bar is open before you travel back for your invite. I mean, if they didn't reach out, would it be not, would it not be a bad thing to ask the baby now? I guess it's just, I'm, I think that. And I didn't know that I could stay up until four A M and I found out one of the hotels was here. Four A M, but I could get my lobby folks back on the site. Get a little bit of it's not too far, but.
So are you saying we should notify them and ask them?
Because this is so new, I mean, the, the convention being in the area. I mean, when I say this is out of the norm, maybe, maybe it's, I don't know if we should notify them, but I would hate to. I don't want to run somebody's business. I would, but. I'm just thinking about if, if, if the downtown hotels bars are open until four A M. If I'm congregating with my fellow conventioners and everybody's staying out till, let's say, two A M. I'm traveling back to Brown Deer at two A M.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, I, I have no reaction because this is a policy question for you, the board. So. Yeah, so it's up to you if you want to approve or not. Um, you know, we could certainly get reaction. Um, I mean, I have no problem with that, but. Um, I, I would also say this is up to you as a village, that if you want people open, serving alcohol past already the established hours. You know, that's, that's up to you as far as a board, as far as if you want to grant additional hours to four A M or not.
So is it something that? We should consider favoring to get more information on? Or go call. Yes, this is city of Milwaukee. Are they opting out of this or not?
No, I, no, I don't believe they're opting out of it. No.
I'm, I don't, I'm for a pervy and I, I know what you're saying.
We're driving around with the pot of drive at the time of night and all of a sudden you see a lot of traffic. At these weird hours for whatever period of time where people coming back to the four hotels that they're going to be in. Because our travel paths are going to be off the interstate down Brown Deer Road. It might be a, a policing. Nightmare coming from some of those establishments like.
I mean, I see this like, I see Summer Fest. Uh, you know, the big entertainer, a lot of people, they go downtown before they go home. But I don't know that that's going to keep traffic to that.
But it's the four A M, because they're open this later, because even with Summer Fest, they're done at eleven ish. And that's still kind of like long. But I was ready to make a motion, but I just didn't, I was just thinking about, oh man, you're probably that much.
Well, I think the thing we're looking at is we're changing hours from two o'clock to four o'clock for days. I don't think it's. Not enough time for them to really build a lot of business doing that. And the fourth day, we know everybody's going to be headed home anyways, so. Really talking three days, so I don't think we need to change what we've got. I think we should opt out.
I'm the worst movie teller in there. How many hotel rooms do we have available ground here? You, you know that number?
I do not know that number. Nate, Nate, do, can you take a shot? I, I don't, I have no idea. I don't know if you would know or not.
Speculation, um, five hundred.
I mean, for me, that's not a lot of people. I mean, we would have done the same thing if the Democratic Party is coming to the town. So I think we should give the businesses opportunity, hopefully keep some of these people off the road when they're driving drunk. That they can come back to the establishment and drink the hotel room and go there. And I don't think there's going to be a lot of people, if you're here for the convention. Uh, you can hear your business, they take care of business. And those who are not, I mean, most likely they're going to stay downtown because that's what the action.
So are there any other questions? So do we have a motion? This will be by roll call.
And I move that we approve ordinance number twenty four that's all one. In order to serve to sixty four C for uh, uh, editor. Seven agree to opt out of extending closing hours for licensed alcohol uh, purposes during the Republican National Convention. As of May first, twenty twenty four.
There is a second. Trustee Greaves. Did you motion the second?
Yes.
So it was moved by trustee Thompson, second by trustee Greaves. We'll do this by roll call. Trust, trustee Woods. Aye, trustee Thompson. Trustee Greaves. Trustee Johnson. Trustee Holmes. Trustee Booker, aye. Uh, approve unanimously. So the next item is. Discuss the possible consideration of the North Shore Municipal Court structure.
I'll tee this one up to trustee Booker. So before I begin, uh, I just want to recognize our. Our current court clerk will be. With Brown Deer for thirty seven years. Um, and. It's incredible to have someone with the longevity that she's been with, with Brown Deer. Um, really providing a steady service when it comes to customer service and the court operations. So I just want to applaud her for her efforts because it has been. So her last date will be May thirty first. So this now introduces a policy question. What do we do? Um, and that is a really difficult question and. Um, um, and one that I tried to lay out the best that I could in this memo. Uh, tonight's discussion, uh, our presentation is for discussion, but I did. Put possible consideration that if you are ready as a board to make that decision tonight, you can. But just know, we, we did structure it that if you want to process the information I'm going to present to you tonight. Then you can, and then we'll have final approval then May sixth. Um, also in the audience um, is Judge Lipscomb. Uh, and then uh, Mary Bursh is here. She is the court clerk in Glendale. And then Carl Warwick is the uh, city administrator in Glendale. So they're, they're all here that in case I misspeak, which is possible. Because I, I don't work necessarily for every day. Uh, they're here to, to help me out. And um, if you have questions that I cannot answer, they're here to also help me too. Okay? So I just want to take about five or so minutes. I'm going to go right through kind of the memo. I'm not going to read it word for word, but I'm going to summarize it for you. So we can process this information together. But ultimately, there's two options in front of us today. Um, option one is we could keep the court services the same. Um, it, it really then becomes a, a question of do we remain the Brown Deer branch of the North Shore Municipal Court? Or then do we become our own court again, which is the Brown Deer Court? As a history back in twenty twelve. Brown Deer merged into the North Shore Municipal Court in order to share uh, judge. Uh, services and share a judge with Glendale. So we've been part of that since twenty twelve. Uh, if you fast forward to twenty nineteen. Um, Bayside uh, joined the North Shore Municipal Court Agreement. Um, as they shared the court clerk and Mary services. Um, they have their own uh, prosecutor, but they also share Judge Lipscomb as a, um, as the municipal judge. Um, so there's a lot of different sharings amongst the, the three municipalities. Um, but we have done that and, and really we've kept that agreement until we hit a point where our court clerk, uh, Debbie would retire. So at this point now, we're kind of at a crossroads where we have to decide, are we all in? In uh, the North Shore Municipal Court or not? Uh, because you know, doing this partial agreement, I don't think it is going to. Uh, be something that the other municipalities would like to see. Uh, I think they would want to see a full commitment from Brown Deer or not. Um, but i- if we were to keep court services in Brown Deer, obviously we know how that operates. The one difference is we would then have to hire our own court clerk. Um, it would not necessarily go through the North Shore Municipal Court. And then on top of that, um, we would have to find potentially our own judge if we were to be our own Brown Deer Court again. We would not be able to share a judge with the other two municipalities. Um, obviously, we know financially what that would look like since that's already been in our, our, our budget. I, I think from a service delivery perspective, um, I can tell you that, you know, when Debbie's out to the office on vacation or an appointment or something. You know, there's a lot of times when someone comes in and we have to have them. Uh, we, we're not able to service them. They, they have to leave and there's a, um, some frustration on that end. Uh, because you know, in, in order to help them, they have to have all their information and typically they may not have all their information. Um, and so that's where, you know, having one court clerk is difficult. Um, uh, a, a setting that would have multiple court clerks. Um, where they would have, be able to structure their schedules and that. So we most, majority of the time have one present would really allow some better service uh, when it comes to people coming in. The other option, which I'm going to spend a little bit more time walking through tonight because it's new. Um, is, is disbanning the Brown Deer branch and consolidating all the services at Glendale. Um, when we were considering this, there's a, quite a few questions that, you know, inquire about. I already talked about the service delivery. Um, if we were to have a new court clerk, another question comes, how do they get trained? Because they're the only, they would, you know, if they were here, they would, they would be the only person here. Um, if we consolidated services like Glendale, it'd be much easier for Glendale to help orientate and train the court clerk. Uh, so that would be a positive there. Also, they would be able to streamline their schedules when it comes to court nights. Um, and, and, and that would be a, a value add to those involved with court. Um, we would have to figure out what to do with the uh, court uh, offices. Um, you know, I think there's a few uh, thoughts, uh, such as having that as the new billing inspection or assessor window. To answer those questions directly, but it gives us a little uh, flexibility of what we could do with that additional office space. Some of the things that we've talked through and just need to be aware. Uh, there, there will be some one-time additional costs. So whenever I say the acronym P I Ps, P I Ps is the court software. Um, so uh, to, to transition our tips records to uh, Glendale. There would be some additional cost for that. Um, in addition, we would have to work uh, with, with uh, the police department. And when it comes to our tickets as far as identifying the proper window to let people know that uh. Court would be in Glendale and not Brown Deer anymore. Uh, so that window, we would um, probably look at doing sometime in the uh, late summer to fall. Uh, just in, in a sense of, of understanding that we would uh, have a window of working on that transition there. Um, obviously, we're going to have to work on a lot of proactive communication to let people know that if they get a citation. Um, in, in Brown Deer that they need to go to Glendale. Um, about, we, we did some reports that showed about fifteen percent of people that get a citation. Um, in, in Brown Deer or in Brown Deer, live in Brown Deer. So majority of the population that is getting citations in Brown Deer are outside of our, our village limits. So that would be something that we would just need to make sure that when they get the citation, that it's, it's clear. Um, that it's Glendale or if they call and inquire about the, the citation to, to make sure that it's emphasized. That, that will, uh, that they would need to attend court in Glendale. Uh, but we ran through a lot of numbers on, on the financial end. And it, it's, it's looking like this is a cost neutral for the village. Um, so we identified approximately moving forward, we'll think it's, it's just under or right about a hundred thousand dollars. Um, and, and you can take a look at that part that's on page two and page three there. Those are the different expenses that um, would, would move uh, to the special revenue fund. That Glendale would manage. Um, so the, that, those expenses would be no longer ours. Um, but there is a portion of revenues that we would no longer get as well and that would go to. Uh, of the North Shore Municipal Court. Um, and taking a look at some of the reports, that's where that's right around a hundred thousand. Um, or just under a hundred thousand while expenses for twenty twenty four moving forward, I think will be just over actually. And a hundred and four thousand is, we have inflation in that too. So taking a look at those trends, I, I, I would anticipate that to be a, a cost neutral for the village. Um, and so, you know, that was one of the things I wanted to see if, you know, if knowing that some of our revenues are going to. To Glendale and the North Shore Municipal Court, what that would look like. But I don't think financially we would be hurt in that situation. Um, I did want to talk that I, I think there would be some future consolidation efforts too. Um, while uh, we would, if approved, we would join Bayside and. And Glendale, you know, this, this full consolidation. Um while uh we would, if approved, we would join Bayside and and Glendale, you know, this this full consolidation. Um knowing some of the other North Shore municipalities, I think there would be some um uh great possibilities of having them come on to the courts as well. Um so that's another thing that it it should be known, um and that could help us long term. Um I I think if we were to make this commitment, you know, I think some of the other North Shore municipalities would certainly make note of that and would be of some of those consolidated efforts in the future. Uh the other thing I want to mention is uh when um uh Glendale managed a special revenue fund at the end of the year, if there's a surplus, that surplus is divided up uh based on uh educations for the uh between all the municipalities. Uh you know, roughly, we would, I mean, it depends on the year, but we in general have about the same amount of adjudications compared to uh Bayside and Glendale combined. So roughly around fifty percent of those revenues, give or take, we could also collect at the end of the year if that were to be a surplus too. So that's another thing from a revenue perspective to keep in your minds. So I'm going to stop there. I think there's a lot, you know, there's some other information that was included in the packet. But I just wanted to take this as an opportunity that if the board had any questions, either ask myself or any of the staff uh or officials in the audience.
If someone had asked the the audience, uh specifically the judge, how do you guys feel about it? So which which way do you think uh the work of that, because you guys are in.
Judge Lipscomb, if you want to use.
This is why I never worked for it, so. I would like to remain. But this week, I moved out of Brown Deer with my family because I didn't think I could become a municipal judge, unseeing the judge at the time. So I I would like to stay here. I'm being chief member, who's not the chief at the time, as present. I think it's a good thing for all the communities of this background. I am the second longest-serving municipal judge in Long Key County, though I probably in the middle range as far as age. So some of them prior retire before me. I see many benefits to all the communities that I have in this in one location. I tried to say to both administrators, forget that I'm the guy in the job right now. Because at some point, it could be somebody else, and it will be somebody else. By having one place, there's only once a year that I would not have my court clerk, he's both one of them available, so it would cover when somebody's sick or takes vacation and for the seminars, so they're required to do it. So it's not as if I have a choice. You know, you have to send them anyways. There you go. The police department takes payments for the court. Twenty-four hours a day when we're not open, so there's always going to be somebody to be able to take the payments, which does not happen now. And the reason why I can't just let anybody take payments for the court, which I could, it's just, I think it's legally there. I just can't open up court records to hand you much. So it's not as if you could designate somebody else to do it in Debbie's absence or replace. There are other advantages, I think, to the building in particular. I'm up for reelection next decade, so I may not be the guy who's still here regardless, but you is a six, two or three years, you can get it. Enough experience, and you have a brand new judge who, you're seeing would not necessarily, they're either going short-term, and I think they're strong. If you have specific questions, I would definitely try to answer them.
Oh yeah, I have some questions. So if this is a cost neutral, whether we stay as we are or we we consolidate, would there still be court here in Brown Deer? Would that all?
Yeah, you're right. The ground is part of the North Shore.
Yeah, no.
Question is just that I have problem when they set it up this way to separate. Initially, there would still be court here, but the whole goal is to give everything to Glendale. That's, I understand there's some issue for residents, but most of the people from the court are not, that's in any way that you should ever present. It's, I I actually pay attention to whatever, I just hate people. I pay attention to residents because you're the ones who made this all possible. But I say to keep coming back, when people start to say that I'm not going to be as friendly, but I'll be as fine the next time. Because anybody can get speeding citations, etc., but if you keep having, they're not paying attention. But it's it's. The hard part will be getting a new court clerk. We're still trying to hire somebody within that process regardless of what your state have known. Can you find anybody with the the represent experience?
Just to go off that, trustee Booker, so by early fall, I would anticipate we would no longer be having court here. So for a few months, we would, but then we would move to to Glendale if this was approved. And then one other thing I should know, there's been times that we've tried to do some special meetings or committee meetings in this room, but every Tuesday, court's in here. So I forgot to list that as another benefit, is that does open up this room for some committee meetings, which we've run into that time conflict in the past. One big one is on Mondays, uh some Mondays, um like Labor Day, for example, we don't have village board meetings. So we've always wanted to meet on Tuesday then, but the issue is this room is not available on Tuesdays because of court. So if this did move to the North Shore Municipal Court, this would open up the space so we could have those board meetings on Tuesday. And that's just one of many examples of that.
Anyone else have any questions? Trustee Johnson?
Yeah, I guess for me, it's probably the only time I will ever ask this question because I always wondered about the fairness of the court, especially when it compares to Brown Deer residents and people who don't live in Brown Deer. This way, you have fifteen percent of those individuals living in Brown Deer. Is there equity within, you know, these decision-making processes?
Between those who do live here and those who.
There's always, you know, as an individual, you know, you always say, boy, if you go through Brown Deer, most likely, you're going to get a ticket. So you better make sure you have this this stuff together. So that's why I'm asking this question.
I I think in my initial, this answer provides that I give some more consideration to residents. And the goal is that if you come back, we're going to know this firm. I will be the resident is that you back in a new time, new charge that they're staying, not going to be as considered as you should know better. Maybe we're complaining about falling down the hill on Shunble, or are they going? They've been doing that for decades. They've been running speed and radar enforcement there. And if you live there and you don't know that, you're not paying attention. So hard one time, but it's your second, third, frequent flyers as a reference. You know, I'll sort with them time to day, etc., but don't ask me for, like, should you keep reducing your tickets or something if you don't know, slow down.
So the other side of it, is it all about money side or is it about the points side?
Most people see no point issue. Uh I most practice my remarks saying, I'm willing to work with people on it, but I do pay attention to your past driving work. If you have, there's a woman here in Brown Deer, forty-three over the limit. And I I said, the maximum speed anywhere in Brown Deer is forty. You're going over freeway speeds in a community that you can't go for your speeds and can go multiple prior speeding tickets. If you're where they all work, but they're around. So it's not like she did it one time. She did it regularly. So I was like, no, I won't touch you any bricks because this is dangerous. My literature, I know which streets are, and I know where the people are. I have a team, whatever they lie, just keep around here, you're going to work up the maximums. So she's a danger to everyone. Okay, but I also tell them, you're a person. Got my first ticket two weeks after I started riding, so I understand it. I said, it did take me seventeen years to get my second ticket. So, yeah, show me that you're the same way. You you learned something from your first. I want to have to see you again.
Yeah, I think my first ticket that I got, I had been getting Glendale.
I didn't know that much. It's impossible.
Well, it was a, I don't think it left that turn, and you said the light was red, but it was yellow.
Um. I like to choose, I would, the Brown Deer judge would be back in the night, he's like, if you look at the statue, yellow means stop. It does not mean you're going to feed out of the road, sure, that can't happen.
Well, in that case, I paid a fine, but didn't lose any points.
Well, I won't, you know, I have no record for action. I was talking, that's your base time, but I don't hear.
Those are all the time, though. They're actually quite, more than like twenty years ago.
You have a question? Is there a consensus on the form of this vote?
Yeah, because if you're ready to vote, I I tried to agenda it to give that flexibility that if you need a a few weeks to absorb the information, you could. Up to the board.
They are all independent to uh approve their motion.
Well, I'll give you, I move we approve the closure of the Brown Deer branch of the North Shore Municipal Court. And go with option two.
Is there a second?
Don't they ask anymore?
None of us.
No, none of us.
That was the last one. Yep.
Was there a second? Who's the motion by trustee uh Woods, thinking about trustee Greaves? To approve this motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next time in this review, it'll prove a certified survey map for Wooddale Crossing, order one fourteen was Wooddale A.
Let's be neat. So this is a certified survey map that is picking up a previously approved project for Jewish family services called Wooddale Crossing, at forty-one fourteen. But you know, that proposal is a approximately fifty-five unit senior living apartment complex that expands on Deerwood Crossing. Uh it basically will front on Tetonia and go down to Wooddale Avenue, uh south from the existing services between the two spaces. Uh this is really kind of a technical document in that uh there are two lots there currently, and those lots uh divide the property somewhat unequally, but they essentially kind of parcel up the space and go through the building. And you can't have a building going across property lines. So what you have in your packet here, this evening is a certified survey map that combines the two lots, one that's on Tetonia and another that's on Wooddale into a single lot that would be common to the new Wooddale Crossing development. So uh we have reviewed uh the meets and bounds and and uh description on the property, if I'm to be accurate, and are recommending it for approval. I would caveat uh that any motion on approval this evening would be contingent upon uh review and approval by the plan commission. But we are taking this out of order, and it has not gone to the plan commission yet. The certified survey map, it has not, but the site plan approval has uh because they are in need of uh an accelerated pace of approval to get to their closing on May first. And so uh there were some issues and delays that caused them to miss last month's plan commission meetings, so we're taking it out of order. But we'll be looking to schedule a special meeting here before the end of this this month to pick up that plan commission uh approval of review.
So who approved this tonight? Why would it be a need to go back to plan commission?
So technically, every certified survey map does, and the way that our ordinance is structured, it is required that the plan commission approve the actual certified survey map document. The way that our ordinance is structured and the way that the physical document, if you look at uh page three of the certified survey map before, you'll see a planning commission certificate required with the signature of the plan commission chair and a date of the approval on it. And so as much as I would like to not have to call a special meeting, uh we have to follow our own requirements and those of the the survey map.
Any other questions, Constance? Trustee Johnson?
Yeah, I think this is again before the plan commission and while we're just developing.
The development did, yeah.
And so at that point in time, they did not realize that this other two partnerships would happen, not even to get lost.
We made them aware of that during the review process, and they knew that they needed to handle this. It was a matter of the engineering and some of the ownership details that were lagging some of the uh site land review. So essentially, they had to sort out some condominium ownership issues with the existing Deerwood Crossing before uh they could draw up this certified survey map.
You have a question? So do we have a motion to approve this item?
I'm against the motion. I uh look in that we approved the certified certified survey map that in in a time by an information to review and approve.
There's a second? Motion by trustee Thompson, second by trustee Owens. Approve this item, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we're going to go into closed session, pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen dot eight-five. I e for the following reasons, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, uh conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Therefore, to the five. We didn't know yet.
I don't really know.
There's a second.
So I think.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, closed session.
Ready.
Okay, we're back in session. There's a motion to adjourn. Motion, I move we adjourn. Yeah, we we adjourn.